We're a minute late, 12:46, and we are back from recess. So, we're starting with Agenda Item 59?
Correct, yes.
Okay, for possible action. Any items from the 11:00 AM session that council staff and/or the applicant wished to be stricken table withdrawn or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. And so Mayor Protem, please.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Item 60, abeyance, a request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees at 1617 Yellow Rose Street. Property owner, Manadik Anthony Mark Jr., and Cogan Joanne Garcia, withdraw without prejudice, requested by the applicant owner. Then we have Item 62, nuisance notice in order for failed inspection fees and daily civil penalties at 816 Alejandra Drive. Property owner, LaPere Tomsolesavec, holding abeyance to September 4th, 2019, requested by applicant owner. Then we have Item 104, GPA 75814, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, on approximately 226 acres, generally located south of the Interstate 515, west of Eastern Avenue, north of Carson Avenue, and east of Las Vegas Boulevard. Held in abeyance to September 4th, 2019, requested by staff. Then we have Item 105, VAR 75824, abeyance item, variance, public hearing, applicant, Rad Management LLC, owner DSRS Properties LLC, 835 Shetland, to withdraw without prejudice, requested by applicant. And that will be my motion.
Thank you very much. Please vote on Mayor Protem's motion.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, Mayor, and Mayor Protem, if I may, I would like to actually obey Item Number 104 a little bit, for a little bit more time, being that my ward is one of the wards being affected. I really do want to do my due diligence, and I know that there's been some concerns raised from community members regarding the adoption of Form Based Code, so I just wanted to make sure that instead of continuing to obey, if we could obey it out for two months, to just really give me that time to have the conversations, really learn it and study it, and then undertake it at that time.
So into October?
Yes, please.
What would that be? City Clerk, 104, please.
October 60?
Yes, that would work. Thank you very much.
And have they been notified, Councilwoman?
Who?
That you are asking for?
Madam Mayor, I'm duly notified.
Oh.
Since it's a city.
Yeah, it's a city.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's the only change to the motion. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And so we'll move on to Agenda. Item 60 now has been obeyed, excuse me, withdrawn without prejudice, so 61. Public hearing and discussion for possible action regarding nuisance notice in order for failed inspection fees of $1,740 and daily civil penalties up to $67,500 for a total of $69,240 for unlicensed short-term rental activity and to authorize the recording of a lien against the property located at 312 South Maryland Parkway. Property owner, MSIV LLC, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. This is a public hearing which I declare open.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. The item before you today is a public hearing to consider the assessment of failed inspection fees of $1,740 and daily civil penalties of up to $67,500 for a total of $69,240 for illegal short-term rental activity. This property is owned by MSIV LLC. The short-term rental activity on this property was reported to code enforcement February 1st, 2019. Code enforcement confirmed that two of the four units in the building were being rented on Airbnb. Based on this information, staff issued a notice and order on February 7th, 2019. On February 20th, 2019, my code enforcement officer spoke with Mr. Paul Marad and advised him to cease all short-term rental activity. On the 21st of February 2019, code enforcement received a request of appeal of the notice and order. Mr. Marad was notified that the request was denied as it was not made within the required time period. Code enforcement confirmed short-term rental activity at this property on March 22nd, 2019, and on April 5th, 2019. Based off this confirming the activity, staff then requested the City Attorney's Office obtain a search warrant to request all the rental data for the two units from Airbnb. After the search warrant was approved, staff served the request on Airbnb. As part of their policy, they notify the property owner or the platform user of the request for data. Mr. Marad filed in municipal court a motion to squash the warrant request, and that motion was denied. Airbnb provided the information to our department on June 25th, 2019. The information returned verified short-term rental activity totaling 135 days of rentals for the two units. The data also showed that the rental activity had occurred for 530 days before the notice and order was issued. Staff is requesting $67,500 in civil penalties be approved and lien against the property. The total amount of income generated by this activity was $12,637. Room tax is owed to the city and is estimated to be in the amount of $7,250 due to the city. Business licensing will be addressing the collection of those funds. As of August 18th, 2019, the Airbnb website was still operational. We are requesting $67,500 in daily civil penalties be approved and $1,740 in failed inspections fees be assessed by lien against the property.
Thank you very much. If you'd announce your name, please, and any comments you'd like to make.
Yes, I'm a little bit surprised because I thought this was an abeyance request. This is Paul Marad, Metroplex Realty. I'm the property manager for the property owners. We had requested an abeyance, so that was done with Ms. Luanne. I've also requested that with the Councilwoman's office. The property owner, I do not appreciate being called or referred to as the property owner. This is a company for real estate property owners and investors. The principal is out of the country because her sister just had a surgery, had a mastectomy, and so she's been out of the country. I've explained that situation in the conversation with the Councilwoman's staff. And I also have an email that I presented to Councilwoman, and I wanted to see if the clerk can take that and give it to everybody, because we have made, this is an email from May 8th. This was from Ms. Vicky Azunia, who just did this presentation, specifically saying that she will call me on May 8th and mentioned it twice in the email. You will see it circled there, and we never received that phone call since May 8th. And I've been wanting to address that issue, but we need an abeyance because, A, the principal property owner wanted to be here, B, they wanted to consult an attorney on this matter, C, they also wanted to get the file that is being referred to and being presented to you, and none of that's been received whatsoever. So I wanted to ask for the same consideration and the same courtesy you just gave to Item 60 and Item 62, so that the property owners have a fair opportunity and chance to be duly advised or represented, and have a chance to also meet with code enforcement, as was attempted to be done following that May 8th. You see the date is cut off on the side that he knows, rather large, but you see on the bottom it's circled when the attempt was made. And I'm sorry, I wanted to give you a copy as well. I want to share that with you. So that's a simple request, that we need fair time, and I think in that, we asked for 90 days from the City Clerk's office, but, you know, it's up to your consideration. There needs to be some time and some due diligence to be done here, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me first go back to Ms. Azunia. Is this paper accurate, or do you have a comment back to this?
Actually, it's not accurate. It's very inaccurate. Mr. Marad sent that email, and in fact, myself and Ido Lina from Ward 3 met with Mr. Marad, and we talked about issues at another property. In this entire meeting, he never brought up his issues with the short-term rental. I was very surprised at that. I would have been more than happy to talk about it. I've been very forthright with the situation, and the notifications for this meeting were sent to the property owner, but Mr. Marad has provided himself from the beginning of this case, as the person to deal with on this property, is he's the property manager. We have done that. We've communicated with him several times, well, numerous times. And so for him now to say that the property owner needs to be here is very surprising to me. We have also sent notifications to the property owners. They haven't contacted us. Everything's been done through Mr. Marad. Mr. Marad was notified of this hearing on August 9th, 2019. They've had more than enough time to either have an attorney who wants to represent them contact me. If he wanted a copy of the file, he could have just reached out, emailed me, let me know. I'm more than happy to send him all the information. In fact, I sent it to him yesterday once I heard the email that was sent to the City Clerk's office, so.
Excuse me, Council.
If I may, this is a public hearing, and so is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue? Please go forward and state your name for the record. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Marad, please go ahead.
I mean, it's disingenuous to say the email is not accurate. The email is clearly printed from Ms. Azunia. It also copies quite a few people, a former councilman, Bob Coffin, Mr. Summerfield, and Susan Finuchin. The meeting that happened recently is regarding a different issue. I've been downtown since 2005. I represent a number of clients. 2005 is way before, you know, things were happening when Mayor Oscar Goodman started with a vision to transform downtown. And we've been here since that time. I represent a lot of different clients. I cannot co-mingle different issues in the meeting. So we had a meeting, as was requested, and we dealt with one item that's totally separate and distinct from this item that is required a separate discussion. So to say, we haven't had a chance to address this with you, we would like to have the same courtesy. The items before and below Numbers 60 and 62 have been obeyed. I'm not sure why there's such a controversy to get an abeyance in order to have a proper conversation with you, with the right people present, and also to have a chance to have the property owner present, because this is a very serious issue. It's a huge fine that you're trying to lien. It's a private property. This is United States of America. They should be able to have a chance to represent themselves. And I'm not sure why you're trying to rush, and what is the hurry? If you're talking about hurting someone to such an extent, you know, it just does not make any sense. We need a proper time, and we requested that from Clerk's office in writing. We communicated with the Councilwoman's office even prior to that, and then we're informed of the proper process, and it's just a simple request to have time. We're not prepared to address this issue now, and there's no legal counsel present, and I think it's in everyone's best interest to have an opportunity to address this with a future city council.
Okay, thank you. I've had public hearing, which I've closed, and any comments from anybody on council before I turn it over to Councilwoman Diaz? Thank you, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Marad, can you tell us how long this situation has been occurring on this short-term rental property that is not properly licensed? When was the first time you were noticed?
The first time we were noticed, I don't remember, and I don't have those facts. I'm not prepared to address it. We didn't have information from the code, which we requested previously, and I just, I need to have those facts. I'm not the right person to address those.
So per my confidential information that I have from my staff, you were noticed February 20th of this year, and they even went to the extent of emailing it to you when you contacted the office. So since February, you've known that it's not okay to be conducting business without a license. What steps have you taken to remedy the situation with city staff?
I addressed this with, I addressed this with the property owners, and I also addressed it with the tenants. The property has leases signed for all the units, and I have those leases, and I actually offered to code enforcement staff to present those to them. And when I offered that, they actually told me I was a liar and hung up on the phone with me when that occurred in February. There was a conversation, and I tried to address that as well. So this was, there was an attempt to do it. That's when it escalated, and I sent the email, and that's the email that everybody has in front of you, asking for that conversation in the meeting. And Ms. Azunia said that she will call me the next day, May 8th. May went by, June went by, July went by, August. We had a meeting on a different, separate matter, because I represent a number of properties, and we have not had a conversation, a chance to have the conversation with her, which we are asking for that opportunity, and I'm not sure why it's so controversial to be able to have that discussion and sit down at the table instead of doing it here in a public forum.
Okay. When did you request this meeting regarding the STR prior to today to Ms. Azunia, and she turned you away?
May 8th. If you see this email, the email that is on the bottom of it requests that conversation, that meeting, and that's her response, saying, "I will call you to discuss it," and to, I assumed it was to schedule the meeting. So we wanted to have one-on-one discussion and conversation, just like we did on a separate property, a separate matter, which is, you know, another unfortunate situation of how things are happening. You know, the code is having selective enforcement on these properties when instead they should be pursuing vagrancy, trespassing, vandalism. Last night it was an example of that with a fire in the Arts District. That's what Arts District is getting on the news for, that type of a fire versus dealing, you know, dealing with.
I'd appreciate the conversation to stay focused on this matter, because we're not dealing. And it is not clear from this email that you've provided us, that you point out to Ms. Azunia that you want to speak about this particular issue in the email. The only thing that I could kind of glean from it is saying, "I will be calling you this," well, actually, that's Ms. Azunia's response to you, actually.
Yes.
About additional issues. She's the one initiating, saying that she would like to have a conversation about additional issues, but I don't really see anything that is correspondence from you to her, saying, "I need to speak to you about this property."
Well, if we, if we look at the whole chain, you see it was copied to Mr. Summerfield, Susan Finuchin, and a number of other people, I think, including Ms. Ido Itoralde in your office. So there was, this was something that was initiated, and, I mean, that's our sincere request. That's our request now. We want to have a discussion and conversation about remedying this issue, which in our belief has been remedied by the nature of the fact that we offered to show lease agreements. There are some tenants that could have been doing some activity, and we remedied that issue as well. We want to address this again in a detailed plan, and that's what the opportunity that we're asking for to do, and seeing if we can reach a compromise, which is always the best route.
Agreed, but it needs to be done in a timely manner.
I agree.
Because now you have Las Vegas city staff spinning their wheels since February on this. It's gotten to this point where we have to lean for these civil penalties. I think had we reached out in February when the notice and order, and then started the conversations from the first time we got noticed, we wouldn't be down this road. I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt, but I don't think 90 days is appropriate. This has already been consuming too much of staff's time. I will be at that meeting. I'm going to give you an abeyance for 30 days. I will be in the meeting, and just for future protocol, you do not notify the City Clerk's office, you do not notify my office one day prior to the item coming before me. You notify me weeks in advance, because there are so many things that we, city council members and the mayor have to be paying attention to, that we can't just drop what we have to just tend the one issue. There's lots going on in our ward. So I'd appreciate it, out of respect for our staff and ourselves as the body, that we get proper notice as well, that we have enough time to hear your concerns, but not at the 10th hour, because it's not fair to us.
Absolutely, I agree, and that's why we ask for an abeyance, to not have to deal with it and do a last-minute kind of a rush, but I, we would do it sooner. I had communicated with your staff, actually, last week as well, but I didn't get the proper protocol, and I didn't follow the protocol of Ms. Luanne Holmes, being notified in writing. I thought that maybe I can address with your office and try to have that meeting, but it was short notice, and we'll do things much more in advance.
We need to be efficient.
Yes, I agree.
All right.
And Mayor, Councilwoman, if I could just say one thing also?
One thing?
Yes, please.
Just indicating that even though an applicant asks for an abeyance, doesn't mean that it's automatically granted, so the person needs to show up, and then only when you vote on the abeyance is the abeyance granted. So he shouldn't take it under any kind of consideration that it won't be heard, so he needs to show up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Madam Mayor.
Council, and yes, one second, please. Councilwoman's decision will be in a form of a formal motion, whatever that is. And yes, please, Councilman Crean.
Thank you. I'm going to go along with whatever Councilwoman Diaz wants to do, yet I just, I can't sit here and not make a comment on the fact that, you know, you've, Mr. Marad, you've said on a number of occasions that you represent a lot of people, and then you stand in front of us acting as though you don't know what's going on. You, you stand in front of us saying that you weren't noticed. You stand in front of us when you've been noticed so many different times, on so many different occasions that have been documented, and then you want to act like you have nothing to do with this property, and that you aren't managing or controlling it. I think it's just very disingenuine. Once again, I'm going to go along with what Councilwoman Diaz wants to do, but somewhat take an approach of, "Well, I don't know nothing about it. I don't know anything about it. The owner's not here." When you've been noticed, you've personally been noticed on a number of occasions that have been documented, and then you stand in front of us and act like you don't know what's going on. And this isn't your first time representing your clients on real estate issues. So I personally find it disingenuine, and I just couldn't sit here and let you, you know, disparage our team as if they're doing something backhanded, or that they're doing something that is, you know, behind closed doors. I find it very, very disingenuine. Thank you.
Okay, a comment? Yes, Councilwoman Seema, please.
Yes, and I would like to also say that it really kind of bothers me the way you've spoken about our staff, because I think our staff is very professional. So when you come before this body, I would caution you, I will also defer to the councilwoman of that ward, but to talk about our staff the way you did is, is just a little disparaging.
Today's 21st. I believe her motion or his request was for a month, and it's up to September 18th would be that council meeting, if that's your choice.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So again, Mr. Marad, respect breeds respect. If you ever encounter our city staff, they are doing their job. Please be respectful. There is no reason why we can't have a cordial conversation. We might not agree on the outcome, but our staff is owed respect. We don't come in saying we're more, we're there less, or have an attitude when we're having or engaging conversations. All I ask is that we be respectful. And, you know, I'm going out of my way here. Obviously, my colleagues don't feel that I should obey this item. I know Ms. Azunia probably doesn't want me to either, but I'm going to be fair and hear you out, but know that moving forward, if you are asking for fair and equal treatment, we deserve the same. And so with that, I'll make, if you want to say something, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I just want to compliment Vicky Azunia, who is in charge of our code enforcement, and what a fabulous, great job she does for all of us in all of our wards.
Okay, your motion then.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and obey this item, Number 61, on our agenda to September 18th, city council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Thank you very much. Motion carries. So we will, Agenda Item 62's been obeyed to the 4th of September, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Okay, so now we're on to Agenda Item 63. Public hearing and discussion for possible action regarding nuisance notice in order for failed inspection fees of $4,320 and daily civil penalties up to $17,000, for a total of $21,320 for unlicensed short-term rental activity and to authorize the recording of a lien against property located at 150 North Las Vegas Boulevard, Unit 2017, property owner, Valery Kobzak, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. And this is a public hearing which I declare open, and hello again, Ms. Azunia.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. The item before you today is a public hearing to consider the assessment of failed inspection fees of $4,320 and daily civil penalties of up to $17,000, for a total of $21,320 for illegal short-term rental activity that has been occurring at, located at the location of 150 North Las Vegas Boulevard, Unit 2017, otherwise known as the Ogden. The property owner is Val Kobzak, and this short-term rental activity on this property was reported to code enforcement November 25th, 2017. Code enforcement confirmed that the unit was being rented on Airbnb, and based off of information issued, staff issued a notice and order on May 5th, 2018. The notice and order was delivered certified mail on May 10th, 2018, and code enforcement then confirmed additional short-term rental activity at the property on June 30th, 2019. Based off of the confirming activity, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2018. Based off of the confirming activity, staff then requested that the City Attorney's Office obtain a search warrant to request the data for the unit. The search warrant was approved on September 19th, 2018. Staff served the request to Airbnb. As part of their policy, they notified the property owner and the user, the platform user of the request. Airbnb did not respond with the requested data back to code enforcement until May 2019. The information returned verified short-term rental activity totaling 36 days of rentals for the unit. The data also showed that the rental activity had occurred for 148 days before the notice and order was issued. Staff is requesting $17,000 in civil penalties be approved and leaned against the property. The total amount of income generated by this activity was $25,509. Room tax owed to the city is estimated to be in the amount of $3,316.17, which is due to the city. Business licensing will be addressing the collection of those funds. As of August 8th, the Airbnb website has been removed, and, I'm sorry, August 2018, the Airbnb website has been removed and has not been operational since. We are requesting $17,000 in civil penalties be approved against the property, plus $4,320 in failed inspection fees be assessed by lien against the property.
Thank you very much. Sir, if you'll state your name for the record, and are you the property owner?
Yes, my name is Valery Kobzak.
Okay, anything you'd like to mention at this point?
Here is the thing, when I bought this property.
You want to speak close to the microphone, so.
When I bought this property on the Ogden, the manager and the salesperson told me I can, I can do Airbnb on this property, you know, because I know some, some of them you cannot rent it out. And when you guys sent me this notice, it was on May 3, 2018, and here it say the initial inspection, no charge, first inspection, $120, third inspection, $180, but after I start getting this fee like for $1,000 and all this stuff, I have all the papers here. And I took my property out, and I just have a long-term rental now, for like years.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything in response there, Ms. Azunia?
I do want to point out that Airbnb was, it took them nine months to respond on our search warrant, and due to the difficulties that we have with Airbnb, I didn't want to, I don't want them to think that we will not bring these items forward, just because it takes them nine months to respond. So, but the property owner did bring the property into compliance after, you know, we requested the search warrant. So he has been in compliance for a long time. I, you know, I do want to note that because at least he's listened and brought the property into compliance, so.
No, that's positive. We like to hear things that are positive, and because of the red tape that's involved in some of these, it's ridiculous, but we want to make sure that we treat all residents equitably, so, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on Agenda Item 63? Any comments from council on this? Okay, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kobzak, how soon after you got noticed did you stop renting your unit as short-term rental?
I got this notice on May 3, and I closed all my days on Airbnb because I have guests from the last year, you know, they was renting, and I just didn't cancel that rent, you know, because people are coming and stayed there, and that's it. After I closed everything and posted my apartment on Craigslist, and I found a tenant who took the apartment for a year, you know. And yeah, I'm so sorry about this, but when I bought this property, I just did an investment, you know, and all the guys from the Ogden told me I can do Airbnb, because I know the Pounds can do Airbnb and the Ogden, but nobody told me, but for now, I will know, I have to come to the city and ask if, if is that agree or not, you know, I didn't know this. That's why I'm in.
Now, Councilwoman, if I might ask, what did you say the, the taxes that were owed on this property?
Room tax is owed to the city. Whenever, if they're licensed, then the Airbnb people have to provide room tax to the city. It's required, I believe, under state law. Mary, you'll correct me if I'm incorrect, but, so, a lot of the illegals, they're, they're not collecting that room tax, and it is money that should be, even though they were doing it illegally, they should still pay the city.
Correct, and part of it tied up because of the lack of response, but what's the total amount of what was owed on the room tax?
We're estimating that at $3,316.17. Business license will work up the correct amount, but it's, it's somewhere around there.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I would like to point out is, when we did notice the property owner, we gave him 30 days. At that time- we gave him 30 days. At that time, we were giving people 30 days because they could still get licensed and stuff, and if they had people scheduled, we felt 30 days was enough for them to cancel anything beyond that point. The rentals continued from the month of June...
No, 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 stopping, if I might, Mrs. Ozuna, stopping at that point where you were giving him the 30 days back up. Now, what is, what would he owe for that period?
We already took those out. We didn't, the penalties were just figured based off of the activity in, after June 2nd, I'm trying to keep the slide up, after June 2nd through the end of July. That encompasses the 36 days. He was in non-compliance.
Okay. And operative and Airbnb occupied?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry to interrupt you, Councilwoman.
No problem.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Also, because we've been dealing with the short-term rentals for the last couple of years, and the Ogden has been quite a challenge, because when the Ogden started selling their units, they literally advertised to purchase it as short-term rental. So the Ogden really had a lot to play and some of the investors in that.
Mr. Kobzak, do you, are you aware you cannot use that unit for a short-term rental unless you apply for a license to operate it as such?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, now I know this.
Okay. You didn't know it, though, at the time you were doing this?
No, I didn't, because I know the Pums can rent and the Ogden. That's why I bought a unit here, just for investment. I don't live there, you know. I bought for the Airbnb. But now I have like tenants for, from last year to this year, and they want to extend it, you know. I'm not gonna do any more Airbnb on this.
So when was the last time you rented it as an Airbnb? Do you remember?
It was, it was first August, yeah, the last time, first, second.
What do you think is, what do you think is fair? What is your ask of us?
I don't know, because I got this notice, and here it say first inspection, it's $120, second inspection, $180, plus 150 civil penalty. But I never, I never get this charge. I just starting getting these charges, $1,500, $330, $500, you know, it's total different amount. I don't know.
Do you understand the amount of the lien that you're facing right now?
No, not really.
Okay.
It's too much.
So let's have the...
I can't even make that money on that property, you know.
And Councilwoman, just for the record, our code talks about you being able to grant up to $500 per day as a penalty for violation of our code. So you're able to grant, you don't have to grant the full $500 per day for every day he was in violation. If you believe it wasn't as egregious, you may go anywhere from zero to $500 per day, depending on what you believe the activity consisted of.
Well, I do like the fact that he remedied the situation, right?
Yes.
And he's no longer operating that unit as a short-term rental, and I think that that deserves some, you know, credit. But, Ms. Ozuna, what are you, what are your thoughts? I'm seeing you wanna kind of chime in.
Well, as much as I would like to support, because he did bring the property into compliance, I just want to point out that we got the complaint in November, the beginning, the prior year. We had some issues with parcel numbers being crossed at the Clark County building, and so when we sent, we originally sent a notice in December, and it went to the wrong people because Clark County had the wrong information. So, but my supervisor did speak with the gentleman and explain everything in December. So it's not like he didn't know, and then, you know, once everything got straightened out with the parcel, which took a while, then we proceeded with notification. So I would like to support because if you wanna, you know, maybe lessen the penalties, because he did bring the property into compliance, but he was fully aware of what the activity he was doing, so.
And if I might add, Councilwoman, our question, what was the date that the council decided no Airbnbs?
That was June 7 of 2018. Mary, I'm looking at you. Do you remember when City Council decided?
Yes, our law changed, I think it was June 23, 2017. And, you know, I would just like to point out that there was email correspondence in February 2018 from our Code Enforcement Officer to the owner, Val, because we did receive a complaint early on, like Mrs. Ozuna said. And he was, we were talking to him about, we suspected he was renting the unit out for less than 31 days. And so he went through this process of claiming he was renting it out for 31 days or more. So it was very early on that he was actually notified that he was out of compliance. And he was finally issued the notice and order in the early part of May 2018. We did give him credit for the 30 days. We do allow him 30 days to clear out those calendars, and he did continue to rent after that period of time. I'd also like to point out that the hearing today, you know, this is, you can think of this as a two-step process, where you're making, you know, a call here as to whether you feel, you know, the fines are warranted. He can always come back at a later date and file for a waiver of these penalties and have another hearing.
And what would be the gain in that for either side of this issue?
Well, that's, that's the process that we have. You can make a decision today with you, what you feel is right, but he would have another opportunity to file for a waiver that could go back before City Council, or it could go back before our hearing officer.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else you wanted to add to this?
I want to say I got this notice on May 3, and I called the officer, his name, it was McCoy. I called, I talked with him, and he gave me this request for a waiver, and I filled this up on September 10, 2018, you know, and I have this waiver now, this year, you know. That's why you guys putting me that penalty like 17,000. I don't know why I didn't get this stuff like before that, you know.
So what he's referring to is a waiver request to go before, at that time, it would have been the designee, because it was just failed inspection civil penalties. But due to the case still being ongoing, and we were waiting for the search warrants, I did not process the waiver request, which is normal process for this, for Code Enforcement, not to put it through until we have the whole story. So...
So all things considered, if I might just continue, Councilwoman Diaz, with Mrs. Ozuna here. If in fact, as I did hear Councilwoman ask, what would, considering all the challenges that were part of this, what, what, really, where should the penalty be? Obviously, it seems to, to the best of his ability, been fixed, and yet there is some compliance in there, too.
Actually, the more I've talked about it now, I think that you should approve what we have requested.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could just for...
Just asking.
He can always apply for a waiver in the future.
Yes, Mrs. Ozuna.
Mayor, just, and for the new council persons, you know, the applicant, the item for, before you today is for the notice and order for failed inspection fees of up to $4,320 and daily civil penalties up to $17,000. So, Councilwoman Diaz, you can go with anything up to the $17,000. And then at a later date, if this gentleman wants to do a reduction of whatever you place on, whatever lien you place, he'll have to file for a separate waiver of those fees. So you can go with the $4,320 in hard costs, and then you, it's up to you to determine exactly what those civil penalties should be, up to $17,000.
Thank you for that. All right, so I definitely know we need to recoup our hard costs, so $4,320, there's no discussion about that. I heard that BNI will be processing the room taxes owed to the tune of $3,360-ish. So I think, I mean, that process will, will hopefully, you know, be followed up on. Knowing that he has to pay those taxes and the hard costs, I would like to see a reduction in the civil penalties by 50% and lien $8,500 in addition to the hard costs. Does that make sense, Ms. Ozuna?
That is perfectly fine.
Okay.
Well, the 33...
That amount would be $8,500, oh, total. Let me, are you cranking it, Ms. Ozuna?
$12,820.
All right.
Not including the, the room tax.
Not including, correct.
Because that's not included for today.
Correct.
Which you estimate, as you say, for that period of time, that we're out?
Correct. Is $3,316, somewhere around there.
Seems we're getting in three ways, which isn't fair. No, I just, I have to say, I think that is a little hard on, for him. I mean, he seems just genuinely was trying. There were a lot of pieces, got all confused. So we missed the tax money. That definitely should come in, because it was occupied. And then he has the original, what was it, four?
Four thousand.
And then to add that last kicker of 50% of the... Yeah. 50% of the civil penalties. I would love to see us be a little more benevolent with the civil penalties. But, you know, I hear somebody's whispering. How about reducing him 90% down?
All right, Mayor, it's coming from you, from Ms. Ozuna. I am...
If you get in trouble, you ever do this again, you can find me on your doorstep. But we're not there yet.
All right, so I'm, I like to listen to my peers. I think that's what a council's all about. So Ms. Ozuna, I guess we'll follow the mayor's...
Could I ask one more thing, since I'm doing...
Yes, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
And I respect you, and I think you're doing a great job, and love having you on our council. She's a very fair person. So as you were saying, Sunday, I looked at your face, so I want to hear what's still there.
Yeah, I understand.
But, I mean, if in fact, all this were added up to...
With the 10%, which is $1,700, plus the $4,320, $6,020.
But does that, our original inspection fees, you want that in there.
Right.
He should pay the taxes, the room taxes that he got.
We can't, we can't include the room tax in this. It's not under our ordinance. It's up for, it's up for Business License to follow up on. We just like to let you guys know that there's additional monies that are gonna be due to the city.
Okay, so those should come in to us, too, in your estimate.
Right, Mayor, you're only agending for the civil penalties and the hard costs today, so...
Right, but I'm going on for what we really can do. So we need to get those taxes through that, the civil penalties, and you were probably writing your riddle.
I think that'll be in a separate proceeding, I think, for the, for the actual room taxes, Mayor. So you don't, you don't have to include it here, but it will be collected at a later date.
Okay, then I'm good. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, if the mayor's ready for the motion, then I move that on Item 63, we reduce civil penalties by 90% to 1,700. We will make sure to recoup our failed inspection fees of $4,320, which would give us a total of $6,020 that he still owes the city.
By what date? A month? How much do you do?
Well, our process is that we will file the liens. He, if he doesn't pay them, come next June, they'll be sent to Clark County for, to be put on the tax roll, which I do want to give you guys a little quick update. The commissioners yesterday at Clark County made some changes to their ordinance and are giving them the ability now to send on short-term rentals. Code Enforcement's gonna be sending their liens to tax roll, too, for collection, for short-term rental issues. So...
Mayor Protem?
Sir, do you understand what we're saying?
Yeah.
You know, with tax roll, you can lose your condominium.
Yeah.
If you don't, okay. So my question that I would like to know from you, with this fine of $6,000 plus, when do you think you can pay that?
I don't know, like, you know, a year?
Okay, so like, so we'll leave it up to them to make that. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Ozuna, he can contact your office for further clarification if he needs to know more about this process, what the lien means, and sit down and have the conversation about the years' time that you just spoke, because I think that, you know, it's complicated for me. I can only imagine for somebody...
Correct. Before I leave here, I'll give him my business card, so he can contact me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's your motion? Do we need to repeat it?
No.
Okay. All right, there's a motion. Please vote. And please post. You vote aye?
Councilwoman Seaman?
Aye.
No, not hers. And that motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Ozuna. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, Agenda Items 64 through 75 on the consent, or on the consent agenda, considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Mayor Protem may have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number 64 through 75.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Consent Item 64 through 75.
Thank you. This is a motion. Please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 76 through 103. Okay, Items Number 76 through 103 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public, public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Agenda Item 76, MOD 76535, applicant Greystone Nevada LLC, owner Howard Hughes Corporation LLC. On a request for a major modification of the approved Summerland Village 24 master development plan to change the Summerland land use designation from SF2, single-family detached six units per acre, to SFSD, single-family special lot development, 18 units per acre. On 103.82 acres in the south side of Crossbridge Drive, approximately 2700 feet south of Sun Creek Drive, PC Plan Community Zone, Ward 2, Councilwoman Seaman. And related items Number 77 through 98, FCD 76513 through FCD 76534, and a request for a Summerland major deviation to allow a 3-foot to 8-foot or 18-foot garage door setback where 3 feet to 5 feet or 18 feet is required on lots number. 133, 137 through 139, 142, 144 through 145, 152, 158, and 159, 163 through 166, 174, 308, 309, 325, 339, 351, 352, and 412. A 421 lot, single-family residential development, a portion of 103.82 acres, south side of Crossbridge Drive, approximately 2700 feet south of Sun Creek Drive, PC Plan Community Zone, Ward 2, Councilwoman Seaman. And related item Number 99, TNP 76536, Summerland Village 24 parcel, FGH, on a request for a tentative map for 421 lot, single-family residential subdivision on 103.82 acres, south side of Crossbridge Drive, approximately 2700 feet south of Sun Creek Drive, PC Plan Community Zone, Ward 2, Councilwoman Seaman. Number 100, GPA 76545, applicant City of Las Vegas, owner Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. On a request for a general plan amendment for M medium-density residential to PF public facility. And related item 101, ZON 76546, and a request for rezoning from R3 medium-density residential to CD Civic on 1.30 acres, northeast corner Bonanza Road, Mordele Street, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Number 102, SUP 76605, applicant Jess the Mess LLC, owner 201 Charleston LLC, a request for a special use for proposed 1639 square foot tavern limited establishment with 600 square feet of outdoor seating area at 201 East Charleston Boulevard Suite 100, C2 general commercial zone, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. And Number 103, EOT 76972, non-public hearing, applicant Bruce Leslie, owner Comet LV LLC, and a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern. owner Comet L V LLC, and a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern used at six-hundred Jackson Avenue, C two, general commercial zone, Ward Five, Councilman Creer. Staff recommends approval on all items and Planning Commission make, uh, recommends approval on items number seventy-six through one-oh-two. That I declare that public hearings open on these items and if anyone wishes to be heard on items seventy-six through one-oh-two. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public hearings. Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion for the one motion, one vote, item seventy-six through one-oh-three.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the one motion, one vote items.
Okay, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So now we will go on to... Okay, that was one-oh-three. Going the wrong way here. Whoa, we're just whipping right through this. We are on page number...
One-oh-six.
Yes, we are on the bottom of page thirteen, for those of you who have your folder. And... One-oh-five, as you know, was withdrawn without prejudice. And one-oh-four was obeyed to October fourth. October sixteenth, correct. I had November, I mean, uh, September. Okay, so, agenda item number one-oh-six. S U P seven-six-two-three-zero, public hearing applicant owner Main Street Investments Three, LLC for possible action, our request for a special use permit for proposed thirty-seven-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot marijuana dispensary use at thirteen-nineteen South Main, C M Commercial Industrial Zone, Ward Three, Councilwoman Diaz. And because of my, one of my sons in the business, in the industry, I will send this over to Mayor Pro Tem to follow it up.
Thank you. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
No, they're asking for an abeyance.
Okay.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, um, the request of this S U P is asking for an abeyance out to October sixteenth.
Would you like to make that motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
I will make that motion to obey this item until October sixteenth council meeting.
There's a motion on the floor? And that motion passes. Item one-oh-six has now been obeyed till October sixteenth. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item... If I can get there, there it is. Agenda item one-oh-seven, G P A seven-six-five-five-zero, and a request for a general plan amendment from S C Service Commercial to L one R Light Industrial Research. And number one-oh-eight, Z O N seven-six-five-five-one, a request for rezoning from C one Limited Commercial to C M Commercial Industrial. The applicant is Amerco Real Estate Company. And the owner is Baginda Singh Randhawa on point-six-three acres at thirty-nine-fifty-one North Rancho Drive, C one Limited Commercial Zone. On both items, Planning Commission recommends approval and staff recommends denial. These are in Ward Five with Councilman Creer, public hearings which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? And if you would, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Mike Vargovich. I am the company president for U-Haul Company of Nevada. Thank you very much, Mayor, and the rest of the council. Appreciate all the time that staff has taken to sit down with us and go over all the, the details of the project. Currently, what we have is a, at thirty-nine-sixty-nine North Rancho is our larger U-Haul facility. And what we're looking at doing is putting a portable storage facility, um, on the property at thirty-nine-fifty-one. The reason for the general plan amendment and the zoning change is simply by definition of the type of facility that we're actually putting up there. It is a mobile storage facility by our definition, uh, but because of the open space, they're looking at it as being a, uh, the planning department is looking at it as being a warehouse. Warehouse isn't allowed in the C one, so that's why we're all here today.
Thank you.
And what we're doing, trying to do, is take the, the, uh, empty lot, and if I can put this somewhere...
Yep, you were right there, I think, there.
And that's just, that's just a rendition drawing. We'll have site, site development plan, site plan and all that as we, uh, as we get through this portion of the, uh, of the process.
How many stories does that...
Uh, it'll be thirty feet.
Thirty feet?
Yeah.
With elevator, I gather?
Uh, it's going to be, and that's where it comes in, the, uh, the portable storage, if I can put this out real quick. It's our, what we, what we call U-Box. It's portable storage that the community uses to take the storage device, to, storage container to their home, bring it back to us, we store it in the facility. So, there, that's where we ran into the, uh, the definition problem, uh, which maybe we can work on as we go forward. But because of it going into a facility, it doesn't have floors, elevators, it's just an open space, is what it's going to be at that location.
Okay, so...
And then we would stack, we stack and store, and then as people need to get into their items, they either need to add to it or they need to empty them out. They can either pick them up, take them to their home, we can deliver them to their home, or if they're moving out of state, we can do that as well.
So they're pods, really? Sort of?
Oh, man, that's a competition.
No, I didn't say that.
Yes, that is, that is, that is the, uh, the easiest definition of it.
Yeah.
It's just...
Only because you got there second?
Yeah, the same thing.
Okay.
It's the same thing.
But that's the concept, because you see them around town. So therefore, the craning and moving them one on top of another is a service you will or do provide?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go turn to Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pierre Lowenstein for the record. Um, so, it is just a general plan amendment and a rezoning. There is no associated site development plan review at this time. Uh, he's indicated the proposed use. Uh, it falls under the warehouse distribution center because they deliver them there, drop them off, and they do send them out of state. So, it falls under that definition, precipitating the request. Uh, the proposed amendment of the general plan would facilitate the proposed rezoning of the property to a commercial industrial zoning district where the potential use is allowed by that zoning district would not be compatible with the harmonious, or harmonious with the surrounding limited commercial and residential land uses, and staff is recommending denial of both applications. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on items number one-oh-seven, one-oh-eight? I'll close public hearing. Any comments from council? Okay, Councilman Creer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I just, if there's no discussion, I can make a motion for approval.
Your motion is to approve?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start with one-oh-seven, please. There's a motion to approve agenda item one-oh-seven. Please vote, please post. That motion carries. And on agenda item one-oh-eight, please...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item one-oh-eight, Z O N seven-six-five-five-one, I move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve agenda item one-oh-eight. Please vote, please post.
All the best.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to one-oh-nine and one-ten. Uh, one-oh-nine, G P A seven-six-five-eight-oh, and a request for a general plan amendment from P F Public Facilities to S C Service Commercial. Number one-ten, Z O N seven-six-five-eight-one, and a request for a rezoning from C V Civic to C one Limited Commercial. The applicant owner is For Him For Life Inc. on four-point-five-oh acres at eight-hundred North Bruce Street. On both items, the Planning Commission recommends approval and staff recommends denial. These are in Ward Three with Councilwoman Diaz. They're public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant a representative present? Okay. Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm not sure why the applicant's not here, but, um, remember that. The density intensity of the proposed service commercial land use designation is not compatible with the adjoining low-density and medium-density residential land use designations. Furthermore, the growth and development factors in the surrounding community do not indicate the need for commercial zoning to adjoin the single-family residential neighborhoods east of Bruce Street. And as such, staff has recommended denial of the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this a, a five-oh-one, C three organization?
I am not aware of if it is or not. I mean, it's the, I think it's...
The name sounds like it might be For Him For Life. Or a church, religious group, or we don't know what it does or is.
Well, currently, the use of the site is Civic with a church on it. So, I don't know if the, the property owners are putting this forth or, um, someone that they're in, uh, an arrangement with. Yeah, it's unfortunate that they're not here to speak on their behalf.
They were duly notified, though?
That's correct, yes.
Madam Mayor, if I could, since the, um, there's no one here to represent the project.
Councilman, and Councilwoman Mayor, apparently, uh, the applicant's on his, on his way here. Would it be okay to trail this item until such time as they get here?
Do you have any idea of how long? Oh, fine. Fine. Is that all right with you, council?
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem. If you don't have any problem just postponing us hearing this item, or these items. Item one-oh-nine and one, one-ten.
Okay, so we'll trail them and we'll move on now to one-eleven. And I'll hold a public hearing on those two items then. So, yeah. Um, one-eleven, one-twelve, one-thirteen. G P A seven-six-five-nine-eight, a request for a general pan, a plan amendment from X, M X U, mixed use to L one R Light Industrial Research. It's probably L I R. Z O N seven-six-five-nine-nine, a request for a rezoning from C one Limited Commercial to C M Commercial Industrial. S one-one-three, S D R seven-six-six-zero-zero, request for a site development plan review proposed sixty-two thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-six square-foot warehouse development and ten-thousand-square-foot shade structure with waivers of appendix F interim downtown Las Vegas area to development standards. The applicant owner is six-three-four Main Street LLC on two-point-six-oh acres, northeast corner Bonanza Road and Main Street, C one Limited Commercial Zone, proposed C M Commercial Industrial. On all items, the Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends denial. These are in Ward Five with Councilman Creer, public hearings which I declare open. Is the applicant a representative present? Yes?
Yes. Todd Kessler, three-hundred Las Vegas Boulevard. On behalf of the applicant, good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and council members, I'll let staff go first, if that's what you'd like.
Okay. Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the subject site is located within the cashman districts of downtown Las Vegas, which allows all, all deviations from Title Nineteen standards should be addressed as waivers associated with the site development plan review. The applicant has requested multiple waivers from development standards to allow reduced parking, building setbacks, landscape buffers, residential adjacency setbacks, and to allow increased perimeter wall heights and lot coverage throughout the site. The applicant has, has worked with Outside Historic Preservation Foundation to address aesthetic concerns as it relates to landscape materials, minor amendments to components of building elevations, including of use of particular color palettes. These changes are encapsulated in the revised staff report and conditions of approval located in your backup materials. However, they, I don't believe they were timely enough to be incorporated into the PowerPoint. Uh, however, due to the multiple waivers and exceptions of Title Nineteen development standards association, associated with the project, staff has determined that the proposed project is not compatible with the surrounding development in the area and will have a negative impact on the adjacent single-family residential properties located to the north and east of the subject site. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard from the public on these items?
Well, I'd like, you want me to go first, or...
Well, we, since she's already up and you were silent in the beginning, let's hear from...
Okay.
...our wonderful Assemblywoman.
Good morning. Heidi Swank, three-thirty West Washington. I represent Nevada Preservation. We have been working with the applicant since the Planning Commission meeting to, um, come up with some color palettes that would match the nineteen-forties neighborhood around it. Um, I, I'll say that in the neighborhood, there's a diversity of opinions on this project. Uh, some folks are good, some folks not so good on it. Uh, but we have worked really hard to, um, accommodate, um, a lot of the things that the neighborhood wanted to see. We, um, made changes in the landscaping from, um, palm trees to cypress because those were the trees that were at the Biltmore Hotel that was historically on that site. Uh, we have put in, uh, the, they've agreed to put in some vines up that wall along First Street so that it's a softer look as, uh, folks who are on First Street look out at that wall. Uh, and also, they have agreed to put in a, um, it's not on the mock-up here, but there will be a, um, right, right, there'll be a mural that says, "Welcome to the Biltmore Bungalows, established nineteen forty-two." And just, um, a nerdy note in that is that it will be in the brush script font that was, um, introduced in nineteen forty-two, the same year that the Biltmore Bungalows were platted. So while it might not fit with the use for the lot, um, there's been a lot of work back and forth, and there are still some folks in the neighborhood who are not happy, but others who are. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to close public hearing. We will go, go back to Mr. Kessler at this point for his presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, again, thank you. Uh, Todd Kessler, three-hundred Las Vegas Boulevard North. It's my pleasure today to bring forth these applications for a general plan amendment, a rezone, and an S D R and corresponding waivers for a sixty-two thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-square-foot warehouse located on the northeast corner of Main and Bonanza. This warehouse is an integral component to this new Circa Resort Casino Hotel. It will service both Circa, as well as Mr. Stevens's other casinos, the D and Golden Gate Casino. I believe this warehouse is appropriate. I'll go over a couple of little things. When we designed this project, we were always mindful of the residential to the east. We incorporated, uh, in our original design, certain rounded edges that we felt were more appropriate. Those have been removed as part of our works with the neighbors. We put in a sloped roof that typically you do not find in a warehouse to help it blend in better with the architecture. We broke up the colors to allow it to be better visually, aesthetically visually better, if you would, to the eyes, because it's a long piece of, of wall along the First Street piece for the neighborhood. And then we used a masonry wall, um, type that was more reminiscent of the forties. So we did a lot of things in our design to think about the residential to the east. And we worked with the neighbors, as you heard with Heidi, uh, and we did our best to try and accommodate everything. We changed a lot of great things. We brought cypress trees in, which is a really nice look, and we're very happy that we were able to do that. Um, as you may or might know, the cypress trees are not allowed per our code, so you need a waiver for that and some other things. Just want to talk about the zoning piece. All of the hard corners on Main and Bonanza are all zoned C M. So all of the four hard corners are zoned C M. Again, that's one of the reasons that we feel that the, the rezone is appropriate. Additionally, on the west side of Main Street, all of the properties north of here are in do, and are zoned M. And then all the properties north of this project...
Mr. Kessler? Mr. Kessler?
East side.
Excuse me.
Yeah, sorry.
Either want to be in front of one mic and turn it funny, maybe stay there.
Yeah, sorry about that, Chris.
Thank you.
I apologize. What I was referring to is all of the properties on the west side of Main Street are zoned M, and all the properties on the east side of Main Street are zoned C M. Again, those are some of the reasons we believe it's appropriate.
Back to your mic.
Moving around a bit. Sorry. Um, a lot of the waivers, like I indicated, are due to just the unique nature of downtown. We are looking for a ten-foot fence here, a screening fence. And the reason we, we chose ten feet is not just the security piece, but also the screening of the activity that's going to happen inside of the warehouse. And that'll help the neighbors to the, to the east not see so much activity that's going on. You know, we've had, we did have a, a neighborhood meeting on June twelfth. It was held at the West Las Vegas Library. We tried to have a meeting closer to the property. We had the Duloc Center was closed for renovation at that time. We reached out to the, um, folks, other folks at the areas to us, and there was conflicts, and we chose the West Side Library, um, as our, as our location. Again, I'll, I'll move quickly. Want to thank staff. It's been an incredible process. We, um, have had a lot of various changes and, and things along the way, and the staff has been great to work with. The neighbors have been great to work with. Again, we tried to accommodate everyone's desires. We weren't able to do so, but I think we did a good job of, of, of drawing a consensus. And then lastly, to thank the council for listening to what I had to say over the past week when I met with you folks. With that being said, I'd ask that you approve something to staff's conditions.
Can you, um, we may have some questions here, and I do have the public comments still open. Um, access to the unit, is it from all the way around?
It's, yeah, it's only off of Main Street. We did that intentionally... We did that intentionally so that there is no activity along the First Street side. And the Bonanza side as well, we didn't feel it was appropriate based on the way the traffic flows, so we felt the best entrance was along Main. We also incorporated in our design a new bus stop and shelter that is being installed on this corner, and that'll be part of our design as well.
And then, therefore, the Golden Gate, how does that service? I mean, back and forth, up and down Main?
Yes. Most of the box truck deliveries from the warehouse to the Circa Resort would go down Main Street.
And are you leasing out space to other properties to store with you?
No, there's... These guys have enough on their plate for this warehouse. Probably need more space than this in the future.
Any questions by council? Before I turn it over to Councilman Creer, public hearing's still open. Was there anything else? Please come forward and state your name for the record. Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Mayor Goodman, other council members.
Do you want to pull the microphone down a little bit for you? Thank you.
My name, excuse me, is Cory Vincent, and I own the property at 105 Palm Lane. My parents bought that back in the early 1960s, and I still maintain it. We moved there in the 60s, and as kids, we used to walk uptown to the movies, go up to the Duloc Center to go swimming, go to Cashman Park to go to the baseball games and fireworks on 4th of July. We love our neighborhood very much, and we're concerned about it. We feel that if this was rezoned, we would just be kind of overrun with warehouses to serve the hotels and the casinos. I... Excuse me. I realize that the applicant has fine... very strong financial interest in the downtown area and is an important part of the downtown redevelopment by providing jobs and income to, you know, to the city. But I hope that you would also consider our little neighborhood. It's been there since the 40s, and it's a cute little neighborhood, and people are starting to refurbish and update their homes and are starting to take more pride in their neighborhood. It's been run down for a long time, but things are starting to pick up and look better in there. Ms. Swank was very nice to come out and talk to us about making the warehouse more appropriate, more attractive to the neighborhood, because we were very disappointed that the planning commission voted to approve the project. And we understand that we are just a neighborhood and that the downtown development is important, but we'll hope you consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard on any of these items?
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman and Councilmen. Thank you for listening to us. There are...
Your name, please.
Charmaine Lai.
And where do you live, nearby?
I do own two properties in that neighborhood.
Okay. Can you point them... Is there that same map, sort of map?
I don't know if it extends all the way.
Okay.
Okay. I own this property on this property over here, and also one around the corner over here somewhere.
Wait, one microphone or the other? Can you stand at the map and then talk? Thank you.
I own this property over here, and also another property over here.
And what do you do on those properties?
I have rented them out. I have remodeled them, and I have spent money to upgrade the properties and to improve the neighborhood.
Okay.
So... So even though we didn't really like the idea of having a warehouse over there, we do take pride in the neighborhood remodeling the place to improve the neighborhood, and I wanted to ask if the applicant would consider putting up a plaque on the corner of Bonanza and Main, on the corner, stating that it's a historical area, because the houses are built in the 1940s. They were built in the 1940s.
Excuse me, you said a park or a plaque?
No. Well, maybe an engraved plaque into the wall.
A little different cost there. Park is huge, and I don't know if there's space, but a plaque?
A plaque or engraved plaque into the wall stating that it's a historical area, as the bungalows were all built in the 1940s as part of the Boulder Dam project when they were building. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Lucky it wasn't a park.
No, I know.
My goodness. Anyone else wishing to be heard? We'll close public hearing and wait. Not closed. One more.
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman, and especially our new council people. I know we got three of them.
Was that your song, "Sherry," that I heard when you first came in here?
Phone?
Sherry...
No, that was my partner. My partner had to meet my neighbor. He had to go to the VA hospital at 1:30, so he had to get out of town, because, you know, the VA is like 30 miles away practically. Anyway, my name is Oliver Moore. I reside at 733 North First Street, and I also own the home at 700 North First Street, right across from this warehouse. I want to say garage, but it's warehouse.
Could you point to that one on the map right in front of you there? Thank you. Okay.
And anyway, this has been a real learning process for me, and I've talked to probably 75% of the neighbors, and they're mostly Hispanic. They don't like to get involved too much, but they did sign some petition. You probably... Did you see petition anywhere there? Did you get a petition? I sent a petition in against the project a week ago.
Those are the ones you noted for us, I think the clerk had on them. Or they're on the attachment list.
Oh, because I just...
You have the list of names.
I didn't know whether you guys had seen it or not.
Well, the main thing is that you give it to our clerk.
You know, there's not many people here. Here's some of the people right here who are on this petition. You know, it's not a big neighborhood, but I went around and talked to these people. And our... As you know, that warehouse, I think one of our councilmen that plays golf could probably hit a golf ball from the warehouse to Main Street Station. I know I can. We're really close to redevelopment, and I noticed on my taxes, I pay for something like 51% of my taxes go towards the redevelopment agency. And I don't really feel that this project is really redevelopment. This is actually downgrading our property. How would you like to have a warehouse right next to your house? This is what I call the Biltmore blunder. This is our badlands that you guys have had to fight and contend with. So I hope you understand how close we are to downtown to build a warehouse. There are places for warehouses, and it should be put there. Now, they're going to put, what, 60,000 square feet, the 2.6 acre lot? Well, that's pretty tight. Amazon's doing basically 600,000 square feet in 56 area, 56 acres. Do the math. I'm not going to do it for you, but think about it. It's too tight and too close. Your staff recommends denial. Your staff was hired by you guys, is paid by you guys, and they're professional. Now, I don't know about the planning commission. That's a different story. Those guys have probably been juiced in. That's all I have to say.
That is inappropriate. That is very inappropriate and not necessary.
Our ward doesn't have anybody on that planning commission.
Thank you.
Mayor? City clerk down here? We do not have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do not have the petition.
There is no petition.
We do not have the petition.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Lewenstein?
Lou, you want to take that from here?
Are there any other comment there?
No, Madam Mayor. We already did our presentation.
Sir, would you like to give the petition to the clerk? Because we do not have it. You didn't. We don't have it. If you don't want to give it, then it's not on the record.
Well, what difference?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard? Here comes somebody.
Hi. My name is Cosimo Peralles. I live at the First Street, 728 North First Street.
Can you show us where you live?
So besides, you know, the... A lot of traffic going to be around no matter what. Our First Street is too narrow. We don't even have, you know, sidewalks.
I think Mr. Kessler said the traffic. Mr. Kessler answered my question about the traffic. He said no, on Main Street, not on First.
Well, suppose no, but as I... You know, it's going to be more busy, the area. Our street's too narrow.
Based on what he is... You respond. I'm not in the business.
I'm happy to respond. There'll be no activity along First Street. There's no entrances. There's no ability to enter the project along First Street. We did that intentionally. Additionally, along Bonanza, there's no way to enter. Main Street is a huge or a very major thoroughfare and has already what I'll call the traffic pattern that is... And they just take a right and turn into off of Main.
My other concern is that, you know, the property value. So it's going to deny because, you know, this is something... You are proving something industrial.
Thank you very much.
Could be commercial. I, you know, I don't understand much of it, but my common sense is, you know...
How long have you been in your house, sir?
Since 1998, I get the property.
Wonderful. Well, I, you know, this is a wonderful company. Certainly, there are always, all of us who've lived here a long time, concerns about our neighborhood, and unfortunately or fortunately, they change, they fluctuate, and we just... But knowing the reputation of everything that the Stevens Brothers have done here and the amount, they are just so careful of residents and the whole flavor of downtown and being a productive partner to the city, I'd be very concerned because otherwise, you have no idea what would be going in there additionally, because they could sell the property and put up something you really...
Sorry, I got lost with my English. I understand not so well.
Well, you've done very well, and you've made a record, and we certainly appreciate your taking the time to come here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
My name is Herbert Falk. It's a pleasure to talk with the council people here of Las Vegas and the mayor. I've lived in Seattle 47 years. I've been in Las Vegas for 14, and I've lived downtown those 14 years on North First Street. And I just believe in my heart that there has to be a better place for this warehouse. How about on Western Avenue or Industrial Street or where the other warehouses are? I just seem to think it's going to change the neighborhood, and that's all I have to say. I just think that I hate to see it go up. I go to the D, and I love what you guys have done with downtown. I appreciate it. Remember coming here in 2005, and the progress has been made. But I just... I oppose it, and I hope that there's another way to go about this. And I, you know, I thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your waiting and coming, so thank you, sir. Anyone else? I will close public comment then, and anything else from the city or no? And from Mr. Kessler, anything else?
Nothing further. I mean, I'll point out one thing. Just again, I pointed it out earlier, just, you know, there is a warehouse directly across the street here. Just so you're aware, we attempted to purchase that warehouse. We were unsuccessful just based on the ownership.
Can you point... Can we get the camera on that slide? That is a warehouse?
Yes. I just share that fact with you.
And still operates as such?
It is. It's not... No one's leasing it at the moment, but it's there.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Creer, any council comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, first, I want to thank all the neighbors for coming out and expressing their concern. I think it's vitally important that your voice is heard here at council. And I also want to thank Mr. Kessler and his team for coming and speaking to us and speaking to other council people about what they want to do. I do believe that the owners of this property have nothing but the highest intention and best use for this property. Everything that they've done has shown that they care about the community, that they are, you know, true citizens of Las Vegas and downtown Las Vegas. I appreciate you working with Ms. Swank in terms of trying to establish some standards from a historical perspective as well. I think that's important. And if you look at Main Street, I mean, obviously, it's a highly, highly commercialized street. There's a motel there, there's restaurants, there's... You see big trucks coming in and out of Main Street. There's warehousing on Main Street. There's obviously major casinos to the south of there. You know, it's a very commercialized area. In the back of First Street, there are definitely residents there. It's a historical residency. There would be no traffic that's going to come in and out of First Street. And we aren't talking about a lot of people and trucks that are coming in. They're going to enter Main Street, they're box trucks. They'll come in, they'll come out. What are the hours of operation for this?
It'll be, you know, mainly during the daytime, not... No evening, nothing past midnight for sure.
Right. Well, so I think we need to establish whatever condition that will state what time that you won't be operating, because I wouldn't want a lot of activity going on at, you know, midnight, 1 o'clock, 11 o'clock. So would you be open to have any condition of like 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at the latest?
Yeah, I mean, I think I...
Let's split the difference to do 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
Thanks. Because, you know, and I think it's... Like I said, there's a motel there, there's restaurants, but back up to First Street already, and so there is traffic, and it's probably going to be more, if you look at the motel and if you look at the restaurants with... There's probably more traffic from that than there will be from this facility. In addition, this piece of property has been set vacant for decades, and I know there were plans to do some type of high-rise apartments out of there during the boom days, and that never came to fruition. And so I think we need something there. I think we're going to have good people who are participating in building this that will work with the neighbors, that have worked with the neighbors and will work with the community, and I think you're going to build a nice product. Like you said, you've made some concessions in terms of the slope, in terms of the vines, in terms of recognition. So I think it's a good use, yes. You can do whatever you want to, Mayor.
That's what I tell my hubby. They don't get voted that way often. But the question is, anything... Because I've not heard any discussion about lighting of the warehouse. Is there... Has planning... Or have you seen anything about what kind of lighting might affect the neighborhood? Are they low light, you know, whatever?
Madam Mayor, so the Unified Development Code addresses parking lot landscaping and requires a certain amount of foot candles at the perimeter of the property, as well as we look for downward lighting on the buildings so that you don't get a lot of road lighting emanating from the site.
Right, because I'm basically looking to the east of the property where the housing is, that it would be... That's taken into consideration so it's not an interference in their area, which I gather is best.
Yes, we discussed that as well, mitigating the lighting and noise and hence the traffic coming in off of Main Street. So yeah, that has been discussed. It's a very good question.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Nope, not at all. I appreciate your comments.
So let's do one at a time?
Yes. So for item 111, GPA 76598, I move for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve agenda item 111. Please vote, please post. I'm trying. There it goes. And that motion carries. Let's move on to 112, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 112, ZON 76599, I move for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve agenda item 112. Please vote and please post.
And also, for the record, Ward 5 does have a representative on the planning commission. It was stated that there was not a representative on the planning commission, and his name is... It was stated that there was not a representative on the planning commission, and his name is Anthony Williams, and he is a representative for Ward five under Las Vegas Planning Commission. Item one thirteen, S T R seven six six zero zero, I move for approval with the condition that operations will not take place, let's say, between eleven P M. and what time do you get going in the morning?
But you have to vote on one twelve before I
Oh, excuse me.
let you make your motion. Okay, and that motion carries. Now you can do one.
Thank you. Item one thirteen, S T R seven six six zero, I move for approval with the condition that operations will not take place after eleven P M. and before, oh, yeah, the standard's seven, seven A M.?
Seven.
Seven A M.
Okay, there's a motion with conditions. Please vote on one thirteen, and please post.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, just for clarification, we did have a revised staff report in your backup, so it's particularly to those conditions and the one that Councilman has added.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kessler. Look forward to it. Okay. Oh, now we're going backwards to agenda items one oh nine and one ten. Your applicants are here, Councilwoman. Okay. So, let's go to one oh nine, GPA seven six five eight oh. I already read this, but I'll read it again. On a request for general plan amendment from P F Public Facilities, S C Service Commercial. And number one ten, Z O N seven six five eight one, a request for rezoning from C V Civic to C One Limited Commercial. The applicant owner is Forehand For Life Inc. on four point five oh acres at eight hundred North Bruce Street. On both items, the planning commission recommends approval. Staff recommends denial. These are in Ward three with Councilwoman Diaz, and are public hearings, which I declare open. And is the applicant or representative present? Hi.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Ricky Barlow for the record, L V Access, representing the application before you here today. And I want to thank you for allowing this item to be pushed back a little bit while I was in transition, trying to get here. Before you here today is a, is what is considered an infill piece of parcel right on Bruce, and major cross street is Bruce and Washington. It's immediately east of Cashman Field. Currently, what's, what exists on this parcel of land is a church. However, the parcel will be transitioning. We've had over seven neighborhood meetings over the year, over the last year, I should say, with the residents who were very concerned in regards to not wanting this parcel to be one hundred percent residential. Because what we're looking to do is basically bring in all residential units on this site. And so they wanted it broken up because they were very concerned about the impact to the school, which is east of this location, and also the traffic concerns that they felt would impact their neighborhood. And so with that, we work with them to get to a point to where is we now have what I consider a mixed-use development in this very critical infill piece right on Bruce. And so, as you can see from the site plan, we have the residential units that will now face the eastern portion of the property line and the commercial, which now will face the Bruce frontage street. Moving forward, what we've done also was gave the residents an option in regards to the look and feel and style of what they wanted in this particular infill piece. And so for that, I would like to present that before the council today as well. Now, understanding that the site development plan review traditionally runs along with the application before us, but due to the process of working through the neighbors, we held back on the S T R to bring it forward after the neighbors had signed off on it, so that S T R will be coming forth. So I do want to at least in advance show the, you, the mayor, and council members what's being proposed on this site. We'll start with the residential.
Is this a five oh one C three?
This development?
Is it, it is a commercial, right? You are going to service commercial. Is it a charitable social service or organization?
No, this is, this is one hundred percent market rate.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's not a nonprofit.
Okay.
One hundred percent private.
Thank you.
After several meetings with the neighbors, we, in working with our architect of record, we basically gave the neighbors approximately eight selections to choose, to choose from as it relates to what they would like to see coming into the neighborhood. And I'm pleased to announce that the neighbors chose this component of their residential look and feel as far as what they wanted to see on this parcel. You'll have approximately four units upstairs and four units downstairs. These are one- and two-bedroom units. The reason for that is because we've been watching very closely as to the conversations as it pertains to the repurposing of Cashman Field and the conversations surrounding M L S. And Mayor, as you very well know, I'm a very big proponent of seeing the M L S stadium in downtown Las Vegas. And so what we're doing as a team is betting on the fact that there's most definitely going to be some synergy at Cashman Field. And so what we're looking to do is bring in a mixed-use housing stock with commercial up front that we can possibly tie right into new improvements specifically in this area right on the border of Ward three, inside of Ward three, but on the border of Ward five as well. Okay? As far as the commercial component up front, the neighbors selected the top middle here to basically go in alignment with the residential piece. And so if you look at both of them collectively, the residential here and the commercial here, in order for it to basically be tied in from a, not only from an aesthetic standpoint, but I believe it's, it's a pretty attractive development that will be coming forward on, on this parcel of land. The neighbors also discussed landscaping because they want to make sure that, that it's heavily landscaped to the east as well as the northern property lines. And so these are some of the landscape concepts that they've selected. And it's very eco-friendly, but beautiful at the same time, specifically during the blooming season. And here's some additional landscaping that will basically be incorporated throughout the property. Okay? Now, and I'll just leave this, I'll just leave this here for now. Now, as I mentioned, we had several neighborhood meetings, and I can honestly say that a lot of those meetings were contentious and very spirit-filled, as I'll put it mildly. And for that, the neighbors are now all in agreeance. They came before planning commission in support of the item, and they shared with me that I'm able to communicate that whether they were here or not, that they are in agreeance with what we're looking for to bring forward to this infill site right at Bruce. So, I'll be happy to take any questions or comments that the council members may have. And I also would like to thank Councilwoman Diaz and her liaison, Idalina, for allowing me to come and present this item before them last week.
Thank you very much. Let's go first over to planning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just to be clear, everything that was shown to you is not before you for consideration at this time? What's before you is a general plan amendment and a rezoning for a zoning district which would allow limited commercial uses, either by right or through special use permit or conditional. And as such, the density intensity of those proposed uses is not compatible with the adjoining low-density and medium-density land use designations. And as previously stated, growth and development factors in the surrounding community do not indicate the need for commercial zoning adjacent to the single-family residential's at this time. And staff is recommending denial of the application for the general plan and rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. The process going for this, as requested here on the application, which you've clarified for us, then assuming, well, if it's denied, it's denied, so that doesn't take rocket science. But if, in fact, we approve moving forward, what is the next step? And when does it come back to council to approve each step?
Madam Mayor, so it's really at the discretion of the property owner at that point for when they would want to file an application for either what's being represented before you now or for something completely different. So, once the general plan and rezoning is approved, that site will then be a limited commercial zoning district in which all the property rights associated with that go, go to the property owner, and they can choose to change their mind and come in with something else, or come forward with this at their discussion on what time, on their timetable.
And no time restriction. It could be in the next meeting or two months down because I'm understanding from Mr. Barlow that they've had several meetings. That's not for us today. Today is just the zoning.
Is it possible that we've had a pre-application conference? No, it's not. Actually, we haven't had one as of yet, so they haven't contacted staff with moving forward with the site development review. That could be anytime from tomorrow, today, tomorrow, to whenever in the future.
Okay. All right, so where we are right now, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wants to make comment on this proposal, the general plan amendment, or the zoning, as you've just heard from Mr. Lowenstein, please come forward and make comments. Well, seeing and hearing none, thank you very much. I will turn this over to you, Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Barlow, for the presentation. I know that for my colleagues, it's a little confusing to keep up with all the moving parts and pieces that you've presented because one, one lay is the residential, the other one's the commercial aesthetics, and then on top of that, the landscaping. So I know it's a little hard to visualize because you don't have it all together, per se, but I appreciate you wanting to be transparent and show that you have had, you said, seven meetings with the community?
Seven meetings.
And what's been the average attendance at those meetings? Like, how many residents are coming?
On average, approximately ten, but one of the city staff members were there, and I think we had approximately four or maybe six people at that particular mandated neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
There was only one neighborhood meeting that was required by city, city code. However, we've had multiple meetings in preparation for that neighborhood meeting.
Okay, so you had others aside from that one where city staff were present?
Correct.
You've also engaged, I believe you mentioned when you, we, when we talked about engaging with the school community as well? Have you talked to the school at all that sits right there on Harris, Hallie Hewitson?
Yes, Hallie Hewitson, we spoke with administrators there, who also basically shared with us as far as the approximate amount of students that were in attendance and that whenever development comes into an already densely populated community, they raise concerns in relation to the impact of student population in the classroom. And looking at the number of units that we have on our site, they didn't feel that this would impact them at all. And so therefore, they chose not to participate as far as coming forward in opposition to the development here before us here today.
Okay, and remind us, how many total residential units are planned for the project?
What was agreed from the residents, we have a total of five buildings and four units to each building. And so there's approximately total number of thirty, thirty-one bedrooms and twenty-two bedrooms. So, so approximately fifty doors.
And you, you also said that their concern was about the orientation of the structure and how you were working to make sure that those structures weren't oriented in a fashion that people could see into the existing homeowners' backyards. Is that accurate?
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. That is correct. To the eastern property line, we have single-family residents that exist here, no two-story. They're all one-story homes here with a block wall that exists on the eastern property line. We're looking to do oversized trees on the eastern as well as the northern portion property lines inside of the development. What we've done originally, these buildings were turned facing east and west, east and west. The neighbors asked us to turn the buildings so that they face north and south. So, all of the light that comes in on the east side will only be stained glass on each one of these buildings to allow light to come in as the sun comes up in the east. So there won't be anyone looking over into the backyards of, of each one of these single-family residents. All the visual, all the visuals will basically be to the north and south interfacing into the courtyards. So, yes, you're, that's correct.
I don't have any questions, any more questions or anything else that comes to mind. Did any other members?
I think the only thing that we're really here on, listening to Mr. Lowenstein, though, is granting the GPA, the general plan amendment, change, and the zoning change. Then if, in fact, I'm sure they're at liberty to come back with more units at the next phase or fewer units or whatever.
Correct. What will happen next, Mayor and Councilwoman, is we'll present a formal application to the City of Las Vegas Planning, and we'll basically go through that site development plan review as far as how we're going to do this in the final elements that are being proposed. And then that will come back before the council for approval, specifically working with the planning department as well as your office to make sure that we're in tandem.
Well, as someone who has pretty much grown up in that part of town and has used Harris Street to get back to Bruce and all that, I see the value added in the project because that church hasn't been fully activated. It's on, it's off, and then there's that vacant lot that sits empty. I don't know. It's been that way since the nineties.
Twenty years.
That I was kind of around Rancho High School, a lot of students kind of walked past that empty lot. So, I think that what you're proposing here would be nice, especially, fingers crossed, the M L S decides to make Las Vegas its home. So I would move to approve item one oh nine. Madam Mayor, if you're ready for the motion.
Thank you, please. Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. All right, there's a motion to approve agenda item one oh nine. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. And agenda item one ten.
And I also make a motion to approve item number one ten.
Thank you very much. It's a motion to approve agenda item one ten. Please vote and please post. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on now. Thank you very much. Where we are now is one fourteen, V A R, thank you. Seven six six oh two, a request for varies to allow a nine-foot-tall perimeter fence where eight feet's required is the maximum allowed, excuse me, with barbed wire where such is prohibited. And number one fifteen, S U P seven six six oh three, and a request for a special use permit for a proposed open-air vending, transient, sales lot use. The applicant is Jonathan Abara, and the owner is A G Comm One L L C and point six six acres at nineteen thirty-five Fremont Street, C two, general commercial zone. On both items, staff recommends denial. Planning Commissioner, commission recommends denial on one fourteen, but approval on one fifteen. These are in Ward three with Councilwoman Diaz, and are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Okay. Do we know where they are? No, we don't know where they are. So, let's go to Mr., okay, here, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Eric McCammon, Case Planning Section. The applicant proposes to operate twenty-four hours per day on a lot adjacent to a residentially-zoned lot where hours of operation are limited by conditional use regulations to the hours of ten A M. to eight P M. Staff has determined that due to the limited distance from residential development and proposed hours of operation, the use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses. In addition, an existing eight-foot-tall concrete block perimeter wall is located around the northeast and west property lines behind the delivery and service vehicle storage building. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a nine-foot-tall perimeter wall with the top one foot consisting of a barbed wire. As the proposed perimeter wall does not comply with the height and building material standards set in Title Nineteen, staff cannot support the variance request. As such, staff has recommended denial of both requests. It should also be noted that the planning department has received pre-application conference requests from the property owner who intends to develop the subject site and the adjacent site to the east into an outdoor entertainment venue with a stage and mobile food vendors, as well as a tavern limited within the building located at nineteen thirty-five Fremont Street while maintaining the existing and proposed use on the site before you know it. the existing and proposed use on the site before you know. Thank you.
I may have missed it, what is the business that's going in there?
The application before you is for an outdoor vendor, so it will be a mobile restaurant kind of setup in the front portion of the site. We just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that we did receive a pre-application conference for redevelopment of the site to the east, and that also impacts the redevelopment of this site for those other uses, as Mr. McCammon acknowledged.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public who wants to talk about 114 or 115? I'll close public hearing. Councilwoman, yes?
Madam Mayor, seeing that no one is here to represent the request, I ask that we hold items 114 and 115 in abeyance for a month.
Okay, this is motion on agenda item 114, then, for abeyance? Okay, let's separate them, on 114, obey for a month, which puts us at the 18th?
September 18th.
September 18th. And I gather your office, please vote, and please post, we'll notify the applicants. And it doesn't bode well if they don't even come. Yeah, and number 115?
Same, the same motion to obey for September 18th.
Motion to obey until, on 115, till September 18th. Please vote, and please post. Sometimes I don't take. Motion carries, thank you very much. And now we will move on to 116 and 117. Number 116, VAC 76744, a request for a petition to vacate a portion of a 20-foot-wide public alley west of Maryland Parkway between Lewis Avenue and Bridger Avenue. Number 117, SDR 76593, and a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, SDR 70269, for a proposed building height decrease from 15 to 13 stories, and an increase in multifamily residential units, a decrease in height, but an increase in multi-residential units from 193 to 219, a decrease of commercial space from 28,817 square feet to 15,996 square feet, and in addition, a 27,195 square feet of office space and 3,488 square feet of restaurant space, with waivers of Appendix F interim downtown Las Vegas Area Two development standards for a proposed mixed-use development on 1.05 acres northwest corner of Lewis Avenue, Maryland Parkway, C1 limited commercial zone. The applicant is BDR Cascadia LLC, and the owners, BDR Cascadia LLC, et al. Both items, planning commission recommends approval, staff recommends approval on item 116, denial on 117, these are in Ward Three, Councilwoman Diaz, are public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representatives present?
We are, Your Honor. Good afternoon, my name is Tony Celeste, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. Along with me is Ed Vance, our architect. Together, we represent BDR Cascadia, the applicant in this matter. Also in attendance with us are Daniel Reisberg, and his partners John Rogers and Bob Corrigan, who are part of this project. First, I want to be, I'll be brief, I will give a little overview of where we've come from and where we are today. I'll let Mr. Vance go through the details on what we are proposing with respect to our amendments to the site plan. So first, this property is located on Maryland and Lewis, right here highlighted in yellow. It is a little over an acre. Many of you council members were here two years ago, and approved the original version of this, which was a 15-story, 30,000-square-foot mixed-use development consisting of 193 apartments, units, with a parking waiver. Now we're coming back in, we're modifying that, because we've, because of some important changes and progress that is being made. For those new to the council, I think you have seen this project, and now get an opportunity to view it through your city council lens, at what we're going to show you. Earlier in the agenda, you did graciously approve our first extension of time for land use entitlements for this, as well as sister site, just catty-corner from it, on Lewis and 11th. In particular, those preserve some of our use permits that we had with respect to the restaurant, with alcohol, lounge, and other uses like that. The major changes that have occurred in the last two years are, one, Mr. Daniel Reisberg is still involved, he is the one who's had the initial vision, and has consolidated these properties, and got the initial entitlements. Since then, he has partnered up with John Rogers and Bob Corrigan, they are based out of Chicago, they build high-rises for a living, they build large-scale buildings in Chicago, San Francisco, Seattle, now getting the equity and financing backing to make this come to fruition. As part of that, one of the first things that they did when they looked at this and said, "This building," almost a direct quote, "needs to go on a diet, we need to skinny this building up, we need to make it efficient." And that's what we're doing, that's what we're bringing forward to you, is a modification to what is already, to what is already approved, what we already have a first extension of time on, we think now a better product. We've brought Mr. Ed Vance in to achieve that, which we believe he has done. So we've gone from 15 stories to 13 stories, and Mr. Vance will get into a little detail that we think we can even shrink it to 12 stories, but nonetheless, asking for 13 stories, 159 feet. We are asking for a slight increase in units at 219, 219 units. And then the second change that has happened, or not changed, but advancement or continued development, is with respect to basically the transition, transient, or transit rapid corridor that is being developed, and going through the approval process, essentially connecting UNLV, which right here is at Russell, going north along Maryland here with various stops. Can see right here, we are the star, this is why we think this is a great site, one of the catalysts for the redevelopment, and to get the mass transit going, whether it be, you know, a rapid bus system, or maybe even light rail. Then it will continue down Carson, Alta Alignment, and then through the Medical District. So we think we are perfectly situated for this type of development, mixed-use development. And with that, you know, we feel like we are the catalyst to lead this, and that ties into our parking reduction waiver. Important to note that we have more than enough parking for our residents, each unit has parking, we then have additional parking spaces for the commercial and office components that we're going to be providing. The idea of this is that this is a work-play-live situation, and so no reason to double or triple the parking with respect to that. Just some final thoughts before passing it off to Mr. Vance to go into some details. We've been keeping the community informed, we've had many neighborhood meetings over the last several years, but most importantly, we had a neighborhood meeting on July 8th at the center that is directly catty-corner from us, about 22 neighbors, constituents, in attendance to that meeting. Had a lot of great questions, and they were all geared to basically, "When can you guys get this built? We want this coming in our neighborhood." I think it's fair, accurate to represent that everyone was supportive of it, and we basically left with the last question of, you know, "Stop talking to us, go get busy, go get this done." So with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Vance to go through some details.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Thank you, Tony. Ed Vance with EVNA Architects, 1160 North Central, Town Center Drive, we just moved it, I'm trying to memorize that. Suite 170 Las Vegas, Nevada, 89144, representing the applicant. Well, Tony said he was going to leave all the data to me, but he's kind of given it all to you, so I just get to show you pretty pictures. And despite that, when I'm looking at this thing, I want to kind of get the microphone out of the way, so I'll do something like that. I think one of the neatest things we're doing is that we've really pulled the building back on all three fronts of the streets that serve the project. We're almost 50 feet off the curb line, so we, on that first floor, pulling it back to create a place to inhabit for outside dining, so what we have is retail on that first level. And as Tony mentioned, this is a true live-work-play-or-shop scenario, it's a mixed-use project of the best definition. And so we have almost 23,000 square feet of retail on that first floor, a little bit of parking and mechanical on that backside. All of our parking will come off of Maryland Parkway, and be directed directly into a ramp that takes you upstairs. I will, I'm going to go right to the elevations, because it really tells the story quite nicely. And it's more of a perspective elevation, I don't know if you've gotten all of these, but does this show pretty well? So as I mentioned before, retail along the first floor. We have three levels of garage here, providing 250 or so parking spaces, and as we mentioned, we have 219 units, so it's more than one per unit that we require. We're hoping that people will work here. We want to have a situation where people live, and work, and shop in the same building. So again, as Tony mentioned, we don't want to triple up that parking, if we can avoid that. The cost savings also makes this a far more attainable housing project, so that's one of the things we're really aiming for. This is the view from Maryland Parkway, so as you're heading south, you'll come into the project and turn to the, to the west. We've created a design where all of the units have, are turned at about 15 degrees, so no one has access or visual into each other's units, so it's going to be very private. It also makes it a visually interesting project as well. This is our main entrance. And this is what I was talking about when I first opened, that's how we pulled, you could see how we pulled the building back, and really allowed for outdoor dining and access to those buildings, and it's shaded, it'll be comfortable in the summertime, and God knows we need that, especially in a day-to-day, today. One thing I forgot to mention is that we have the residential component here, but on top, we have a roof deck that's been divided into two components, one's private and one's public. Daniel Reisberg has really created a real neighborhood project where the public would be allowed to access the upper deck, and it's almost two-thirds of that deck will be for farmers' markets, cinnamon night, and neighborhood functions. And he's giving that to the neighborhood, which is great, not just for the residents. The residents will have a private side with a pool, but only one-third is for them. So this is truly going to be a real terrific project for not just the residents here, but also everyone in the neighborhood. And with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, looks beautiful, we all want to go for a swim. Before I go to council, actually, let's go to Mr. Lowenstein. Okay.
Madam Mayor, Eric McCammon, Case Planning. This is a request to allow proposed modifications to a previously approved mixed-use development located at the northwest corner of Lewis Avenue and Maryland Parkway. While the Founder's District does encourage land uses such as a mixed-use development for the subject site, the project as proposed is overbuilt. This is evidenced by the requested associated waivers and previously approved variances. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the site development plan review modification request. With regards to the requested petition of vacation, staff recommends approval, as this is a proposed re-entitlement of a previously approved vacation, which expired on July 19th, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I can just clarify one more thing, on the transit hubs, this is actually within the quarter-mile radius of where the transit stop would be, so it's in the vicinity, but it's not the designated hub, per se. Thank you.
And that may change again, too, correct, or is that?
Everything is possible.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on 116 or 117? I'll close public comment, any comments from council, before I turn it over to Councilwoman? Councilwoman?
Well, Madam Mayor, if you're ready, I'd love to make the motion to move to approve item 116.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve agenda item 116. Please vote, and please post. The motion carries. And on agenda, item 117.
And I'll also move to approve agenda item 117.
And there's a motion to approve agenda item 117, please vote, and please post. And the motion carries. So according to the neighbors, get going.
Yes, thank you very much, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are on to 118, and 19, and 20. Hmm, wow. 118, VAR 76469, a request for a city council review of the denial by the planning commission, and a request for variance to allow 47 parking spaces where 173 spaces are required on .76 acres. Number 119, SUP 76470, a request for a special use permit for a proposed 7,800-square-foot liquor establishment tavern, tavern restricted use with 1,000 square feet of outdoor seating, with a waiver to allow 150-foot distance separation from a similar use where 1,500 feet's required. And agenda item number 120, SUP 76471, on a request for a special use permit for proposed 7,800-square-foot nightclub use with 1,000 square feet of outdoor seating with a waiver to allow a 385-foot distance separation from a church house of worship where 1,500 feet's required. The applicant is Rhythm Dance Studio, and the owner is 4545 West Sahara Avenue LLC, at 4545 West Sahara Avenue, C1 limited commercial zone. On all items, parking, the planning commission and staff recommend denial. These are in Ward One, with Councilman Knutson, are public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, I'm one of the owners.
And your name?
My name is Nathan Strager.
Name?
Nathan.
Nathan Strager.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to speak to us on this?
Sure, we built this facility about a year and a half ago. Prior to that, it was the old Phillips Supper Club site that burned down about, I don't know, 14, 15 years ago. Once it burned down, it was chain-link fenced all the way around it for years and years, a lot of drug activity, a lot of spray paint and whatnot, so we came in, we did a construction loan on it, we opened it, it's half dance studios, half event center, so we have a lot of weddings, birthdays, stuff like that, and on the other side, it's a lot of classes. We've been operating for a year and a half now, we've been hand-in-hand with the previous mayor pro temp, which was Lois Arcanian, been here a few times, and we've been working with Mary, and business licensing, and planning, and now our new councilman, Brian Knutson. So we've already been operating as such for the last year and a half, we've never had any complaints. We've been very straight and narrow, anytime there was a concern of somebody wanting to rent our space, and I had a question, I would always call and ask, and say, "Hey, is this okay? Are we okay to do this?" And they would always tell us here. So no, I never did anything that was in the gray area. So we've always been very straight with the city, we've always been straight and narrow, we've always been hand-in-hand, so we've always followed the rules, and here we are, hoping that we can get this approval, and this enables us to be profitable, more profitable, because it's been very, very tough, having to turn down, you know, a lot of different things, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Lowenstein, or Eric?
Madam Mayor, Eric McCammon, Case Planning. Both the proposed tavern-restricted liquor establishment and the nightclub uses require a 1,500-feet distance separation from any church house of worship. At the time of application, it was noted that a church house of worship was located approximately 385 feet from the subject site. During a recent field visit, it was noted that a second church house of worship was located directly adjacent to the subject parcel, resulting in a zero-foot distance separation. With the adoption of the new tavern-restricted land use category, the city council may waive the separation requirements as part of the application. Staff finds no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the parking variance request, and that the proposed uses are too intense for the subject site. Therefore, staff recommends denial of all applications. Thank you.
And where is the second house of worship? I see the one, but where's the other one?
Madam Mayor, it's directly to the west, in the U-shaped shopping center.
Oh, it's leasing?
It's a tenant space within the shopping center.
So it's not an independent structure built for?
That is correct.
Okay. And how about the one that's 1,500 square, I mean, that's 1,500 feet away?
I believe that is to the north and east. Jeff, if you want to go to the special map, it would illustrate it. Not it. Maybe it's not in the backup, sorry. It will be in your backup, we have a special map, but the...
Is that also a leased space, or is it a separate construct?
That one I'll check on.
Okay, thank you. And when he said he's had no, Nathan said he had no citations or anything, Ms. McCallhahn?
Madam Mayor, that is correct. So Mr. Strager has been... So Mr. Strager has been operating under a special event permit when he does have his public events. And we have not, in the last year and a half that he's been operating under, had any complaints or any citations in regards to that activity.
And no traffic problems reported by any law enforcement because they're under park?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we've never been identified, notified of any traffic issues as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? And please say your name for us.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Densmore. I'm the property manager for the property to the west of the dance studio. And I work for MBL Group. The ownership is Abona Family LLC. Our main concern is the parking because we know that there is insufficient parking there and there is some overflow that happens to come on our property. You know, even though we haven't had a lot of, you know, haven't had metro activity or anything like that, we have had complaints still that people are parking on the property. And unfortunately, we can't monitor it all the time. And we just hear after the fact that, you know, there were a lot of cars parked there and, you know, creating a mess, basically trash. So our main concern is that there's not enough parking, you know, with the tavern. And I wasn't sure how Nate was going to operate this, but it sounds like it's the same thing you've been doing along with the events. But as a, you know, as a tavern, I've managed another property that's a tavern and there's always problems there. And there's a lot of trash along with, you know, whatever comes with intoxicated people. So we're hoping that that's not the case. But that's our main concern. It's just there's not enough parking there and we don't have the staff or the funds to monitor the parking space on our property all the time. So we're hoping you give that consideration and hope that...
What are the hours of operation of your property?
It's 24/7. There is a convenience store there that sells liquor, so it is kind of a competing business as far as that goes. But it is 24, it's open 24 hours.
And Mr. Strager, what are your hours of operation?
Yeah, let me kind of respond to that. So there is a liquor store right next door. And I'm actually, I actually have both managers' phone numbers. And we actually put signs in their parking lot that said, that there's no parking. We actually do monitor it. And I've always told them that if there ever is an issue, to call me. I have their phone numbers in my cell phone. I've never gotten a call. The, I think they're Middle Eastern guys, very, very cool guys, never had an issue. And they're the only business that's open 24 hours. All the rest of that parking actually closes at, I think most of those businesses close around 5:00 or 6:00. Also, we actually have an easement to the east to park at 40, 45, 35, I think it is, to the east. And Councilman Knutson actually came out and I showed him, and there's actually a parking access that goes underneath the building to the east. And last time I was here in front of the Planning Commission, I actually explained that to them. And when I had my meeting with the Planning Commission, I forget the gentleman's name, and we had went through, you know, the per-square-foot and the parking and whatnot, and he goes, well, you might as well ask for the whole building. We're like, okay, might as well ask for the whole building. We were just going to ask for the event center side. But it is an easement that's been recorded with the city. And I brought that up last time when I was in front of the Planning Commission. As Councilman Knutson can attest to, I even showed him on the side of the building to the east, it even says parking access. And there's literally a walkway underneath the building just for us. So parking has never been an issue for us because we do have that easement. If I'm not mistaken, that easement runs concurrent with the property. I think it's like 90 years or something like that. So as much as I appreciate you coming down, we've never had trash or anything like that. As a matter of fact, we're very stringent and we're very proud of our building. If you look at our building, it's the newest building on that street, you know. We didn't just build it like a school. We spent a lot of money on wood and stuff like that. We clean up our parking lot every day. We maintain our landscaping. You know, we're not trying to be a nightclub, per se, but unfortunately, in working with Mary, and she can actually attest to this, I've turned down a lot of nightclub activity. People want to come in, that's not. But unfortunately, in what we want to do, this is what's being created, the tavern restricted. So she can attest to it. And I'm really surprised actually to see Bonnie next to me because I've called you a few times, even when we were going to get ready to build. And I said, hey, I'm here, I'm here to work hand-in-hand with you. And if there was ever an issue, I would have thought we could have addressed this prior to standing in front of city councils. So I'm really kind of surprised, so.
Well, and to address that too, and I understand that, basically, I think what's happened with the people at the liquor store, they don't have time to call you in the middle of the night and say, look, there's cars here and, you know, we want them towed away. Are we going to tow them away if you don't move them? That's not happened a lot. You're right. I mean, it's not a every weekend occurrence, but it does periodically happen. And that's, you know, basically our concern. And certainly, I've got your number still too, so I can give you a call in the middle of the night if I get a complaint.
Yeah, and just so you know, I'm actually there for every event. I'm actually onsite for every single event because per our license with Metro, I'm one of the, there's a name for it where me or my partner has to be there. So one of us is there all the time and we're actually very hands-on. We don't just sit at home and let somebody run our business. First of all, we're a new business and we can't afford it. So we're actually there running it. And we've never had any. I'm very surprised. So yeah, you don't have to worry about calling me in the middle of the night because I'm actually there.
Okay, good.
So, but if there's ever an issue, you have my number. The liquor store has my number. It's not a competing business because we're not selling alcohol to be taken off-premise. If anything, it actually hurts our business. People would want to go next door and buy $2 beers or buying a $7 at a wedding or something like that. But anyways, so I hope that addresses that.
Now, you sound like a good neighbor to me and just, you know, maybe to pass it on to your lease, you know, the people that lease from you for the liquor store, anybody else. Here's his number and/or his partner's.
Yeah, and if I can just kind of jump in, I'm sorry. If there's ever, and you do have my cell number, if there was ever an issue or if you have, if you want to meet once a week or once a month, I mean, we're very transparent. So we're more than willing to, if there's any concerns whatsoever, if you want me to hire a security person to stand out there or whatever, I'm willing to do whatever I need to do. Right now, we have signs that we actually put there just to kind of help, you know, but we've never really had any issues, so.
Thank you very much and thank you for coming down. Anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? Okay, I'm going to close public comment unless there was something else, Bonnie, you wanted to add?
The one thing I was going to say is, I think maybe when we saw that it was going to be a tavern, not realizing that you're just, you're not going to turn it into a bar, let's say, where you're going. And I think that's probably the misunderstanding maybe as to what the whole process was for. So, yeah, we're thinking that you're going to turn it into a bar and a nightclub and I know what that's like, so.
Well, it looks like you've got a couple of guys here, or maybe a lady on the other side.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to be a bar owner. That's not, it just so happens, it's the license I have to have, so.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Thank you. So anyone else from the public? Okay, I'll close public hearing. We'll turn this over to you, Mr. Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. And first off, Ms. Densmore, you left me a message and I did not return your call. I apologize. So I apologize for not calling you back. I did hear of your concerns. And for Mr. Strager, I have talked to a couple of the tenants in the area who were concerned about parking. I wanted to bring this item forward for a couple of reasons and I really want to make sure that's very clear, especially to this council and to the staff. Earlier this week, I had a meeting about repurposing big-box stores. I didn't want to talk about repurposing big-box stores along the Charleston and Sahara corridor and at the same time, shut down your big box. So I think what you've done with that rhythm studio is a sign of what could happen on the Charleston and/or Sahara corridor. I walked through your facility and I think there's a misconception based on the language from the Planning Department. And so if you don't mind putting on the record what it is that you're, the big box that you're operating, what you're actually doing there.
Sure. So right now, like half of our, half of our building is dance studios and we really primarily do a lot of Latin dance. So we do a lot of partner dancing and things like that, right? So if you dance salsa, bachata, things like that. So in Las Vegas, there's really no place to go. So it enables us to give our students a place to go. And in turn, there's an alcohol element of it. Just so you know, we're not killing it at the bar. I think our bar sales per month are like three grand. So we're really not killing it. And we're talking about total for 30 days. But it gives them a chance to dance with each other, practice with each other. We have nine dance teams from kids to adults, things like that. So it gives us a chance to do in-house competitions, gives us a chance to do pro-ams, you know, professional with an amateur. And they learn how to dance with each other and actually perform. And we do a lot of that. So it's more, it's more giving them a place to go. And we used to rent space at other places, but building this building, we're able to do everything in-house. And then at the same time, we do do weddings, birthdays. We've had Michael Jackson one five-year anniversary. We've had Arielist hanging from our ceiling and stuff like that. So we're definitely not trying to be a bar or whatnot. It's just so happens, that's the name of the license, tavern restricted. And I think people kind of think that's what we're trying to do and it's really not.
And so for this council, so I would bring my son or my daughter to do dance lessons in rhythms because I think it's a, it's a, it looks great as a parent. And I totally understand that nightclub doesn't actually clarify what it is you're trying to do there. It's really for family gatherings. It's for weddings. It's a great establishment from my perspective. And parking, while I know it might be an issue, I do think the times are changing. And I know someone who personally took dance lessons from you and she did not want to find parking. And so she would Uber over or she would find friends to drive over. And so as I look to rethink what that Charleston and/or Sahara corridor can look like, I think you're a good example and I want to make sure that your business thrives. And so I am grateful for the time you sat in the back of this room and thankful for the investment that you've made in the city of Las Vegas. And with that, I would move to approve item numbers 118.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve agenda item 118. Please vote and please post. Motion carries, 119.
I would move for approval.
Thank you. Motion to approve 119. Please vote and please post. Motion carries, and on 120.
I'm sorry, just a quick question. Mary, is this a time, we had spoke about time, is, do I have to come back for?
So Mr. Strager, the next step is to get the business license, not that you have the land use. So I would contact Minerva Gomez in our office. I think you have her contact information and we'll get you set up for that. And we'll get you agendized for that liquor license.
Okay, thank you. I just know we had talked about, there was a 2:30 time limit and we talked about going over and things like that. Is that the time to address or is that a later time?
Right now, I think you're good.
Okay.
Just contact Minerva and we'll get you set up.
Just didn't want to walk away and there was something on the table.
And you got away to the third, 120. And Councilman Creer did come back in and say he wanted to be voted in on I-11819. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Wait, not done. One more.
Don't move. Not one muscle. For item number 120, move for approval.
Please vote and please post. There you go. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Let us know how our office can help your business thrive. Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you so much, everyone.
Excellent. Okay, we move on to 121. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, appeals for the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance letter abatements.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we go on to our second, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless subjects on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Any members of the public wish to speak under this portion? Hi.
Hi there. My name's Heidi Gustafson and I'm with the Foundation for Recovery. We provide opportunities for people to achieve long-term recovery from the disease of addiction. September is National Recovery Month. We have hosted our recovery rallies in a city facility for the last seven years. And again, this year, we will be hosting it at the historic Fifth Street School, which is a perfect venue for what we do. I would like to invite the city council to come down. We are going to give you a table if you want to go, especially anyone maybe that's newer. If you want to go ahead and come down and meet your constituents and maybe put a heat map up and just have the opportunity to talk to people. We get 350 to 500 people coming through this four-hour event. We have Attorney General Aaron Ford will be there. He will be our main speaker. We'll have probably, it's only a four-hour event, so we have maybe about an hour, an hour and a half of programming. It's very light on programming. And I, Councilwoman Diaz agreed to introduce him and he really was excited about that. And so the Attorney General has his eye on criminal justice reform in a really big way. And so a couple of things have happened over the last couple of legislation, legislative in 19 and then in 17 also. And he's going to talk about that and where he's trying to take the state. And, you know, anything like this is really good for the recovery community because we have people that are ex-felons and have been out in the community for 30 years who still pick up a tab for being a felon. They can't vote. It's hard to rent places. So we're really excited to have him come out. And, I mean, that's about it. I just wanted to invite everyone down and put it on the record that we're having this.
And your date again and the time?
September 21st from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we have, we have parking available across the street. It's at the structure and we pick up the price for the, for the parking through grants.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
I would just like to say the Foundation for Recovery is in Ward 1, so thank you for your work.
Right, okay, well, thank you. And I would just like to let you know that we have a couple of grants that allow us to provide peer recovery support services. And they can travel. And so if you have anything going on in your wards where you need peer recovery support specialists, we can send them out.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? We will move on to agenda item 123. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. There's always council who wishes to speak, so I'm not going to ask the question. And last time I started left, this time we'll start at the right with Councilwoman Diaz.
Thanks, Mayor. I thought you were going to go in the same order.
No, always.
You caught me off-guard. No, I just hope that everyone is getting back into their back-to-school rhythm. I know that my husband and I have been getting hobby to and from school this week and we have been mindful of our school speed limits and crossings. So make sure that we continue to be vigilant and keep our kids safe. I do know that UNLV through our Facebook, I posted the 10th Annual Community Law Day, that it's Law Day for Immigration Purposes. UNLV William S. Boyd School of Law is a community in that work. And go ahead and check out our Facebook post about it. You have to pre-register to attend. You can't just show up. So just make sure. And that's on August 24th, which is this Saturday. on August twenty-fourth, which is this Saturday. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ward One.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And earlier in the council meeting, we talked a lot about the medical district. I just want to put on the record that while I spend a lot of time there as a father of my son, over the next week, I'll be visiting with the CEO of UMC and touring it from a very different perspective, learning what my role is in helping them to be successful. Also, we talked a lot about education this morning, and next week, I'll be hosting an education roundtable with the Ward One principals and region superintendents, and with Dr. Maxwell from the city of Las Vegas. And then, so that I can keep up with my other council members, I'll be doing Brews with Brian, which I can't wait, talking to as many constituents as I can. I got to keep up with Councilwoman Seaman on social media, so I'm going to be doing my best to compete, compete on social media. I'm going to do it.
Good. All right. Boy, you are hot, yes. Mayor Protam, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So our updates on Friday, we are going to do a little meet and greet over at the YMCA office from nine to eleven. We'll be having coffee and donuts there. That's going to be at our YMCA office this Friday, August twenty-third, from nine to eleven. And then, our missing juvenile was found, which was very exciting, yeah, yep. So she was sixteen-year-old female, and her name is Ms. Pead, and she was found, thank goodness. But now we are looking for Elizabeth Bronx, seventeen-year-old female. She's five-six, one hundred and sixty-four pounds. She's got brown eyes and black hair in braids, African-American. She was last seen in the area of Pecos and Bonanza, and last wearing a royal blue shirt, burgundy pajama pants, and flip-flops. So please, if you have any information, contact our Las Vegas Metro Police at seven oh two eight-two-three-three-one-one-one, or Nevada Childseekers at seven oh two four-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-nine. Then we have a seventeen-year-old beautiful female, Delilah Salinas. She is five-one, one hundred and twenty pounds, brown hair, brown eyes. She is Hispanic. The Las Vegas Metropolitan Police is, as persons section, is asking the public's assistant in locating our juvenile, Delilah Salinas. Delilah was last seen on August nineteenth at ten-thirty p.m. in the area of East Charleston and US ninety-five. Delilah was wearing a gray sweater and blue pants. Delilah may need medical attention. All hospitals are asked to check their registries, so please, if you have any information, please call Las Vegas Metro Police at seven oh two eight-two-eight-three-one-one-one, or our Nevada Childseekers at seven oh two eight-two-eight-twenty-nine-oh-seven. Thank you, and have a great week.
Wonderful. That's great. I mean, we are finding so many young people returned, and, you know, with all the human trafficking that goes on, if anyone's out there that's being trafficked, for heaven's sakes, call the authorities. You don't have to live that life, and just know, we're here for you. So moving on to Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first announcement's pretty cool. The Kingdom Choir will kick off their first North American tour in the city of Las Vegas on Friday, September the seventh, at seven p.m. at Sammy Davis Jr. Festival Plaza, right in the Renzi Park, which is located at seven-twenty Twin Lakes Drive. The British Gospel Choir catapulted to global acclaim, where they captivated two billion viewers with their widely-publicized performance at the royal wedding of Prince Harry of Wales and Meghan Markle, Duchess of Sussex, at Windsor Castle in two thousand and eighteen, when they performed Stand By Me, and from just coming back from London in the Windsor Castle is even more special. Tickets are twenty-five dollars plus taxes and fees, and all ages are welcome. The tour is in support of their debut album, Stand By Me, soulful collection featuring renditions of classics to more contemporary cuts from today's hitmakers. Their performance is outdoors with lawn seating. Attendees are encouraged to bring lawn chairs and our blankets for comfort, low-back chairs. Well, don't forget, for tickets, visit www arts las vegas dot org, or call seven oh two two-two-nine arts, two-seven-eight-seven. The Jackson Avenue Project, the Public Works Department and myself invite you to a stakeholder meeting to discuss the proposed complete street improvement alternatives for the Jackson Avenue Project. Meetings will take place on Monday, September sixteenth, four p.m. to six p.m. at the historic West Side School located at three-thirty West Washington Avenue, Suite one-twelve. For more information, please contact the city of Las Vegas, Engineering Project Manager Randy McConnell, at seven oh two two-two-nine-two-one-eight-six. The AD Guy Knowledge Center is open, as we reported earlier, at eight-one-seven Innes Street. They offer free and low-cost educational programs for all ages, GED classes, lawn workshops, help-learn English, training to start first on new jobs, reading classes, workshops on budgeting, help for new and small businesses, and more. For more information or services offered, visit www.unce.unr.edu backslash AD Guy. And don't forget, you can always keep in touch with us on social media, at Twitter, at Cedric Creer, Instagram, Councilman Creer, and Facebook, Councilman Cedric Creer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Seaman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I look forward to the challenge of social media with my colleague in Ward One, Councilwoman Knudsen. I also want to, even though she's already left, thank Ms. Gustafson for being here all day to talk about that wonderful event for Foundation for Recovery. They do such a great job. And so in our ward, in Ward Two, we have a Veterans Outreach Meet and Greet, Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Veteran Memorial Leisure Center, Service Center, where we will have some food and talk about some of the issues that are important to veterans. And then, on September seventh, we have, we're having our back to movie in the park, and we'll be showing Wonder Park on that evening at six-thirty to nine-thirty. And our Small Business Sundays are going really well, so we encourage anyone who has a small business in Ward Two to reach out to us so we can feature them and be a part of our new Small Business Sundays, and they'll be featured all over our social media. So you can contact us at our Ward Two email, or our phone number, or just reply to our social media. Thank you.
Thank you. Aside from everything our, my colleagues have talked about, which is so important, I think, the school year and being careful whether you're walking or driving into a bay all speed limits, but also for children, the biggest key in the world to success is being a reader. Makes you think, makes you able to talk and work through disagreements. It gives you such an advantage, reading, 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 so no matter what grade you're in, read, please. But have a great school year, and hopefully, everything will work out between the teachers' union and the Clark County School District. It would be a shame for children have to have their educations interrupted. And it's almost time for our Life is Beautiful Festival, which, as you know, is Friday, September twentieth through Monday, September twenty-third, and everything is available online that you can read about at lifeisbeautiful dot com. So go and go online, take a look, have a wonderful time. And our next city council meeting is right after Labor Day, which is Monday, the second of September, and it will be on the fourth. But everything is good, it's wonderful, and it's so good to be home. I was out of town yesterday, back east, and flew in, got to bed at quarter-three in the morning. So we have such an active council, and they keep me alive and thinking and working and having a good time. So colleagues, thank you all. You really are a great bunch. I just love working with you, and I thank staff, our I.T., our marshals, for sure, our clerks' office, our staff chiefs, and have a good, safe weekend when you get to it, and know it's hot outside. But our next council meeting again is Wednesday, the fourth of September, and thank you, be safe, and have a great time. We are adjourned.